Aloha, kakahiaka kako. Welcome to the Committee on Water and Land Hearing. We are in Conference Room 430 at the State Capitol. Today is February 1st, 2024, and we are hearing our 9:00 AM agenda. My name is Mahina Poypoy. I'm the Vice Chair of the Committee, and to my left is Chair of Water, Land, Representative Linda Ichiyama. Members present, we have Representatives Suzha and Morikawa. If you're testifying today, we'd appreciate it if you try to keep your testimony to a couple minutes, and we may ask you to summarize. We have over 100 individuals signed up to testify, so we want to do our best to give everyone their time and ensure time for questions and responses. If you're testifying by Zoom, please turn on your camera and microphone only during the time you're testifying, and for YouTube streaming purposes, please do not use a copyrighted or trademarked image if you're using a virtual background. The chat function should only be used for technical assistance. If you're here in person, we ask that you please don't stand behind the door. Just for your own safety, we don't want you to get hit by the door. Okay. If you're viewing the meeting on the TV in the hallway, please be aware that there is a slight delay, and if you're waiting outside to testify, please just listen closely for your name to be called, and then come in the room. Okay, let's get started on our first measure on the agenda, HB 2378 relating to the Hurricane Reserve Trust Fund. Department of Budget and Finance.
Good morning, Chair Ichiyama, Vice Chair Poypoy, members of the committee, Louis Solivaria from the Department of Budget and Finance. You have our testimony with you. I'll stand on our written testimony, but just to reiterate, you know, the proposal that we're doing does not change any of the operations or the conditions of the Hurricane Relief Fund. This is merely an issue of moving state funds to the Treasury so that we can be better managed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Tax Foundation of Hawaii on Zoom.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Tom Yamachika from Tax Foundation of Hawaii. We just have a technical comment, and that is, we believe that the deletion of the earmark, rather, paragraph three, page two, lines seven to 16 is unrelated to the bill and should be reinstated. If it stays in the bill, you may run afoul of going beyond the subject matter in the bill's title. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. That's all we have signed up to testify. Is there anyone else wishing to testify? Okay, members, questions? Oh.
I never signed up to testify.
Okay, go ahead.
Would you like me to be the first one to start, or can I just sign up to?
Oh, we're testifying on HB 2378 relating to the Hurricane Reserve Trust Fund.
Okay, no worries. I'm sorry, I wanted to testify after.
Oh, yeah, when we get to the agenda item. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on this item? Otherwise, members, questions?
For Budget and Finance, Dr. Solivaria, thank you for being here this morning. I think you heard the testimony from Tom Yamachika.
Yes.
That perhaps maybe there was a drafting error in deleting the OPEB earmark.
Yes, we can, we can, we have no problem with the proposed amendments that the Tax Foundation is proposing.
Perfect, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Will this affect our bond rating at all? Is this fund kind of related to the strength of the, our Treasury?
It would not have any bearing on our, on our credit position representative. This, again, merely is a situation where the funds for the Hurricane Relief Fund are held outside of the state Treasury and managed by the Hurricane, by the Hurricane Relief Fund Board. We have an existing operation in place through the Department of Budget and Finance, so merely bringing that money into us, it eliminates the need for the Hurricane Relief Fund to pay any administrative fees. It provides them immediate degree of liquidity in the event that they needed that money versus.
So it's still there if they need it.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. In fact, it's actually has a higher level of liquidity if it's within the Treasury.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any more questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to HB 2093 relating to the Department of Land and Natural Resources. First up is DLNR.
It's gonna be a long morning. Aloha, my kako, Don Chang, Chair of the Board of Land and Natural Resources. We stand on our written testimony. We do have available state parks. Kirk Cottrell, if you have any specific questions, thank you.
Thank you. Next is Boss Frogs Dive and Surf, Zachary LaPrade. Okay, we'll move on to the next. Sail Maui, Don Prestage. Okay, next is Antoinette M. Davis. Okay, thank you.
Aloha, aloha, I'm here, I'm on Zoom.
Okay. Okay, so after Zach is Sail Maui. Okay. If on Zoom, you can mute until your time to testify, please. Thank you. Okay, go ahead.
Hi, Zach LaPrade, testifying in opposition to this bill, but also some questions for the DLNR if they can answer, because I wasn't quite able to tell if this bill was meant to read that all rental surfboards and all rental paddle boards throughout the state need to be registered, whether or not they're operating in a state park or not. To the extent that that's true, I think that's extremely difficult to do. There's no certain identifying marks on surfboards such as VIN numbers to allow them to be properly registered and identified. Also, stickering and labeling the boards would be extremely burdensome, given the volume boards for rent, paddle boards and surfboards on the island, and also, I don't think very useful in the sense that I imagine there'd be wear and tear and difficult to maintain. So if it is the case that all rentals, surfboards, and paddle boards are required to be registered, whether or not they're in a state park, I urge the DLNR and the committee to reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll call again for, for Don Prestage, followed by Antoinette M. Davis. Okay, Antoinette M. Davis, you can testify now on Zoom.
Aloha, kakakiaka. I apologize for interjecting. My name is Antoinette Davis, and it's been my honor to represent the Activities and Attractions Association. We're a nonprofit trade organization for 27 years, and I appreciate the opportunity to testify. I'm going to provide comments. Our membership consists of mostly guided controlled tours, which in contrast to rental equipment, and I do think it's odd that this is selective in the rental equipment, but, and I also know from detailing in the past with the state that the decals have not stuck well and ended up being a pollution issue in the ocean. So that, if it hasn't been addressed, that needs to be addressed. But it's a small benefit, closing these rental businesses on the weekends and holidays. I think the intent is to lessen people who are not knowledgeable or educated or on a controlled tour, which is far less friction-causing with residents because the people are educated and also, you know, they're, they're held together. But closing them for almost a third of their business opportunity is a really big financial hit for these rental companies for a small benefit. And renting on the weekend and holidays, that is when, you know, those of us that work regular work weeks, that's when we could actually do that as well. So it's not, I don't know, I think it's a small benefit for a very large impact on a business. So thank you very much for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Next up is Zoe Vella, followed by Ann Layton. Zoe on Zoom? Okay, not present, Ann Layton on Zoom.
Good morning. My name is Ann Layton. Sorry, can't get the video up. I'm a lifetime resident in Hawaii, and I live here in Kauai. I'm in Waillua River three to four times a week. We are overrun by hundreds and hundreds of people going up the river. Ever since the river's management was transferred to state parks, evidently due to a quirk of our system, the rules didn't go with it, so every random person is just renting stand-up boards and kayaks. It's a real mess. The permitted companies still have to pay all their fees, all these other guys are getting away. It's a completely unfair business climate. I owned a small business for 20 years. We had to abide by the law. I had to work with the state to shut down other unlicensed motorcycle dealers. So I'm totally in favor of this. The residents have the right to expect that we have access to the river, particularly on the weekends. Yeah, that's when people are off, they want to enjoy the river without hundreds of kayaks and paddle boards. I am fully in support of this bill, having stickers affixed. That was a system that was in place before 2016, and I would also urge you to increase the types of watercraft that are included in this bill. Right now, it's limited to kayaks and paddle boards, but what about fishing boats? What about, you know, small powered boats? People are always gonna look for a way to get around the law. So let's, let's make sure that this bill is thorough and doesn't self-limit itself so that we can really alleviate this problem in the river. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next up is Anella Kialakai in person. Okay. Okay, that's all we have signed up to testify. Would anyone else like to testify?
No, I signed up to testify.
The second. Oh, yeah, I know. Okay, in the room, you can come up.
Go ahead, please come out and just stand right, right by the bulletin board.
Okay, aloha, everybody. My name is Devon Milligan. I'm from Hilo Ocean Adventures on the Big Island. I just wanted to kind of start just by reminding you that we're all professionals. We keep people safe, and we provide our visitors knowledge and skills to keep our reef safe and to respect our people, the Aina and our culture. Our guests are always greeted with safety briefings and an introduction reminding them where they are and how they should act while visiting these islands. As a boat captain and a tour guide, my main objective is preventing marine ecosystem damage. I've saved thousands of lives by providing proper training. I've rescued countless lives that weren't part of my tour, these people who decided to enter the ocean unguided on their own. If the issue is conflict with recreational users, this is why we need a good leader, someone who works with the community and makes things better, not just to take more money. It appears that there's been not much structure, and too many permits were given out, and now the DLNR is scrambling for a solution. With all these rising fees, these small family-owned businesses and small companies will not survive. This bill has taken away jobs from locals in the middle of a housing crisis. We need a leader, we need someone responsible that truly cares about the Aina and its people. The tourists will not stop flooding onto these islands, causing overcrowding and further damage to our land and natural resources. I think the DLNR needs our help, and at this point, we need their help. But before considering passing this bill, please ask yourself, is funding really the issue? Does the problem lie deeper? Is the money that we give used to its full potential? Do you think we should take a look at where the money's going before asking for more money? This bill, along with inflation right now, will cause an economic crisis, and history will repeat itself, and locals will be forced off the island while the rich take over. When will the rising fees stop? I oppose this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to clarify, we don't allow booing, so we don't allow applause. Thank you. Just to clarify, we have a number of bills on today's agenda, and right now, we're on House Bill 2093, which is relating to operation of rental watercraft in state parks. So just want to make sure we're all on the same page, that we're on House Bill 2093. I know a lot of folks are here today to testify on House Bill 2477, and we will get there in a few more bills.
Aloha, good morning. My name is Teri Wilkins Leicher, and I am a managing partner at Jack's Diving Locker in Kona, Hawaii, and I am opposed to HB 2093 in its current form. The biggest part is the weekends and holidays, because so many of us come Aina, who have been living here almost all our life or all of our life, you know, or, you know, we just, that's when we get to go and play, many of us, we're not, you know, we're working. And so we want to be able to go to another island and rent a board or, you know, go someplace, and I can understand limits. Definitely, we should have limits, and I think that there are very successful ways to do that for various parks, and this has been done all over the country with great success in national parks and other places. And I feel like we're kind of putting the cart before the horse, and we kind of need to take a step back and have a little bit of better communication between DOBOR, DLNR, and the constituents to come up with better viable solutions, and that's kind of going to be a consistent message. I'm, our company got the Hero of the Year Award for Environment. I am the Chair for the Kohala Chamber of Commerce for Environmental Committee, also the Vice President from Malamakai Foundation, and we work with marine environment and reef protection, and then I'm also Vice President for the Ocean Tourism Coalition as well. Mahalo.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else wishing to testify? On Zoom?
Yeah. I was originally signed up to testify. Sorry, you missed it.
Can you please give us your name?
My name is Ravi Moreno. My name is Ravi Moreno. I oppose the bill. These last testifiers, even the one that was in, not in opposition of it, pointed out something very, very consistent, which this last young lady also pointed out. This is, this is moving way too quick, there's not enough data, the DLNR is understaffed, they are underbudgeted. A lot of these House bills wouldn't be necessary if we had a better staff, better budgeted DLNR. And there's no other options being in place, so there's just a lot of missing data. Are there other options for professionals and locals to, to access the ocean on the weekends and the holidays? Why is it only state parks? Why is there no collaboration between the county and the state? Just so many unanswered questions that leaves the whole bill just, it's, it's just not necessary. This bill should not be coming out until proper data has been asked, proper data has been presented, and, and like the woman started off earlier first, like, it's not, it's not a huge win as much damage as it's going to be to your small business owners that keep this all going around. That young man also did a phenomenal job in stating that, yeah, we do save a lot of lives, some of which are local, and we understand the oceans, we understand the waters better than anybody else on the island. There is a shortage of ocean safety for years now, as well as DLNR, DOBOR. As far as coast guard, there's an extreme shortage. So these professionals with these certifications that put their lives on the line to help other people and not just their guests are what keep the island. on the line to help other people and not just their guests are what keep the island safe and not having a national increase in ocean deaths from these tourists and from some locals that decide on their weekend that they want to go in the ocean when they haven't gone in the ocean for 10 years, living on the island. So it's a lot more damage than it is help. And if it is more help than it is damage, I'd love to see the data on that. So let's defer this bill until we have real data showing what the difference is between being in there on the weekends and not being there on the weekends. And that's all it is, is I just think it's missing a lot of really important data before you just jump the gun. And thank you for my time.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else wishing to testify?
My name's Chris Lee, I'm from Kona Shoredivers, and I just had a couple questions. I understand this is about state parks and rental equipment. Is that every snorkel mask at every place, every place in the state? Is that where the equipment is, or is it only surfboards and kayaks? That's it? Okay. All right. I think I've been, my question's been answered. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify? Okay, if not, we'll move to questions from members. Chair.
What's your first state parks?
I'm ready.
Thank you.
Good morning. Kirk Cottrell, Administrator, Division of State Parks.
So I think there's some confusion about where this bill would apply to.
No, absolutely. I think I can provide relief and clarity for a lot of the folks, and Ann Layton summed it up. The primary target is Waillua River State Park. The intent of the measure, and I think what has really alarmed people, was the amendments to Chapter 200. And they haven't seen our testimony, but our testimony pivots, and we only amend our state park statute. And the intent of this measure is to continue our efforts to reduce over-tourism and restore balance and let resources rest and let local residents have access to their park units. The only three parks this bill will affect with the intent of transiting through the park on waterways with rental equipment is Waillua River State Park, Kialakukua Bay State Historic Park, and to some extent, but it's a minor use, is Kahana State Park, has a river. It is not a global registration of surfboards and watercraft. It's primarily designed to allow locals to get back onto their waterways and have the commercial folks stay off the water. And we did this at Waillua River. The tours that have permits, they're honoring our restriction. They only operate Monday through Friday. However, the rental industry then inundates the river, as Ann had talked about, with a lot of commercial use. I do have some data, because we've been doing this at Kialakukua for several years. For example, I have permitted 115 commercial kayaks at Kialakukua Bay. There are 291 non-commercial kayaks, and what we've done at Kialakukua, and each place is different. Waillua River's porous. There's a lot of places of entry. At Kialakukua Bay, there's really only two places you can launch a kayak or a stand-up. And we've prohibited the launching unless you have a permit. And what we've accomplished there is we now have a database, I'll just throw it out, 115 commercial kayaks, 36 commercial boats, 33 commercial stand-ups, nine inflatables, and six canoes. And then on non-commercial, 291 resident kayaks, 49 resident boats, 390 stand-ups, seven inflatables, and 17 canoes, like, you know, the canoe clubs. The reason we offered comments with the amendments is this bill I don't think is fully cooked yet, but we appreciate the introducer's intent to try to help us get a handle. This isn't the only way we can do it, but I think having a backstop of a state law prohibiting the use of the kayaks and the stand-ups on weekends and holidays, and Ann made a good point, we may want to look at adding some other type of vessels to it. But I think we should move it along to keep the dialogue going. I'm not absolutely wedded to amending our statute. We could probably do it by rule as well, or we could do it by reservation system. But I think this is a good way to get the dialogue going, is we try to seek tools to deal with this over-tourism issue. The other thing the committee could consider is a sunset. Perhaps maybe we put it out there for a period of time, you give it a sunset date, we test drive it. Because like I said, the only two parks this will affect is Waillua River and Kialakukua at this point in time. That's where we have.
But that's not in the bill.
No, no, you're absolutely right. That's why we added the amendments, taking out 200. Thank you, mystery voice, whoever you are. And for example, Makena and Wainapa Napa on Maui are the only two beach parks we have, and there's no rental kayak use there. It's too hard to get to Wainapa Napa, and Makena has a shore break, so you can't launch or land there. So this doesn't affect Maui at all, which I believe a lot of people, and I think the mistake was the amendment to 200, the DOBOR statute. So I'm trying to separate us from DOBOR as much as possible on this one, and just keep it, sorry, keep it a state park-related measure. So, anyway, does that help kind of clear the air in terms of what we're trying to get at? Okay.
Okay, thank you.
I have some questions. So that was my question, too, because the definition of state park waterways is very specific.
Correct.
Should be very specific. And that's what's missing, I guess, in this bill. And my other question was going to be, why couldn't you just address it through your rules?
There's a variety. This is one tool that we're like experimenting with, and we appreciate Rep. Epsom's effort, you know, for his district. But it's got the dialogue going, and that's why we just said comments with amendments. I think, like I said, it's not fully cooked. So if you give us a little bit more time, we might be able to make the bill work better or decide it's not the best tool. Because it's got two more hearings, so we got time.
Yeah, and thinking of it on the other side, if no, this was not a popular place, or tourism was really low, we'd want to promote usage of this kind of stuff for the economic driver of use. We would be talking a different story.
Yeah, yeah. And I want to point out, our permits at Kialakukua are free. We don't, and the reason we don't charge for the permits is because Epsom's really good enforcement, and we need a marine enforcement unit at Kialakukua. I don't want to charge for permits, and if people are non-compliant and don't pay, I don't have an enforcement mechanism to ensure compliance. And same with Waillua River, right?
Right.
Yeah. So our amendments for the folks that were concerned about, you know, us charging, I amended it using our statute saying we may charge, but it's not an absolute charge. Because we're doing fine, pretty fine with income on our parking and entry and camping and lodging. This bill is really about controlling impact as opposed to revenue generation.
Right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Members, any more questions? Okay, seeing none. We will move on to HB 2474 relating, oh, okay. Chair.
Okay, sorry, folks. Before we move on to House Bill 2474 relating to ocean recreation equipment, and this is the bill to allow BLNR to issue interim administrative rules to regulate the use of ocean recreational equipment. I just wanted to, because I know so many people are here and are eager to testify on this measure, and I wanted to make it clear upfront, my intent is to defer this bill so that it would not move forward. If anyone would like to testify to change my mind on that, please feel free to come forward. If not, if you're okay with the bill not moving forward, then I would ask that you please stand on your written testimony so that we can move on to the next two bills, which I think everybody is eager to get to. Okay, that's my announcement.
Okay. Okay, House Bill 2474 relating to ocean recreation equipment, DLNR.
Okay. I guess we're going to be here for quite some time. But thank you so very much, Don Chang, Chair of the Board of Land and Natural Resources. I'm going to provide a little bit of context, because we have several bills before you. So DOBOR, Division of Boating and Ocean Recreation, is coming in with a bill, with what I'm calling a bill package, 2474, 2477, 2476, and 2475. This particular bill, and let me provide you the overarching context upon this bill package. I think DLNR's mission is to preserve and protect natural and cultural resources. And so that's the focus that we're looking at this bill package. It is not intent to run small businesses out of business. It is, it is our desire to better manage all of our ocean recreational activities and our marine resources. So this first bill, it is what we are describing as our adaptive management tool. It provides us, DOBOR, the ability to quickly respond to emerging technology, new equipment that's coming out that we cannot prepare for. So if they have an impact to marine resources or to impacts to user conflicts, this bill would allow us to adopt interim rules just for 18 months, to allow us to get a better handle on the situation, and then come in with more permanent administrative rules. So that's, this bill is specifically designed to permit us to come in with interim administrative rules based upon an adaptive management approach. So that's the summary. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Blake Moore, Terellani Sailing Adventures. Okay, next is George Garnas, Gemini Charters on Zoom. Okay, not present. Ko'olah Fuller, Kohona Charters.
Hi, my name's Ko'olah Fuller, Kohona Charters. What was this one about again? Sorry, I kind of forgot. Is that the one with making the rules without public input?
Interim administrative rules, yes.
Oh, okay. I strongly oppose on that, because I believe that all the public in the community should have an input on any rules coming out, that they would have to abide by. So I oppose.
Thank you. Don Prestige, Selmaui, followed by Shandra Bertsch, HoloHolo Charters.
I'll start if she's not going to show up. I'm Shandra Birch with HoloHolo Charters, here representing myself as a business owner on Kauai and as a concerned community member. I strongly oppose this bill, and I grabbed my wrong paper. Sorry.
If you're in opposition to this bill, you can just stand on your testimony.
Okay.
She wants to defer.
Understood. There's a portion that I didn't add to my written testimony. I just want to add that 18 months is incredibly too long for a temporary bill that's going to put people out of business if something comes up where they are unable to operate for 18 months. If this is really a temporary rule, then it should be one to three months. That seems like a reasonable timeframe versus 18 months. You will not have any employees stick around that long. You will not be able to maintain your assets or investments over that long a period of time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Teri Lycher, to be followed by Nick Croft.
I'm good, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next is Nick Croft.
And I'm Nick Croft, I oppose.
Okay, next is Ryan Brunner, to be followed by Justin Smith.
I'm Justin Smith, and I oppose.
And I might be outside.
Okay. Next is Victoria Martosi.
I'm standing on my testimony.
Okay.
Okay, next is Ryan Brunner.
Next is Kainis Shiki on Zoom. Okay, not present.
Hi, good morning. My name is Ryan Brunner, and I just want to stand on my written testimony on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, that's all we have signed up. Is there anyone else wishing to testify?
Again, I signed up for this bill, Ravi Moreno.
Okay, we'll get to you right after this testifier. Thank you.
Again, Chris Lee, Kona Shoredivers. I understand the dring and dfer that I didn't have a chance to put in written testimony. I just wanted to say that I strongly oppose this bill. The verbiage in here that makes it illegal to use any public shoreline access to enter the water for commercial activity, which is kind of buried in there, it's also buried in '75 as well, would put me out of business entirely. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, we can get to the testifier on Zoom.
Aloha, this is Ravi Moreno. Been active in ocean activities in the state of Hawaii for six years. I just see a consistency here. Again, it is underneath several bills. It has sneaked in in several different directions, but the most important thing that's going to continue to stand out, that has to stand out in every judiciary, or excuse me, every legislation every year for five years, is that the DLNR needs more funding, and it needs more help in employer retention. They need to be paid more money to do their job, and then we won't deal with any of these problems. It's falling on the House and the Senate to handle basic state and county issues that should be handled within the DLNR. It's why we have the DLNR. And then I'll stand on my testimony moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else wishing to testify? Okay, questions? Okay. Oh, go ahead.
My name is, hold the microphone down on the side for her.
Thank you.
Right here.
Kurt, can you move that microphone?
My name is Sascha, and I oppose.
Thank you so much. Okay, members, any questions for our little testifier? Okay, we will move on to HB 1809.
Okay, before we start on 1809 and House Bill 2477, I just want to make it clear for everyone testifying here today that I understand there's a lot of concern and frustration, especially around HB 2477. I hear that loud and clear. We've received several hundred testimonies right here. I want to make everyone aware that my intent is not to vote on these two bills today, that we are going to defer decision-making on both of these bills, House Bill 1809, House Bill 2477, to next week, Tuesday, February 6, at 10:15 in this room, Room 430 at the State Capitol. And the reason why we're doing that is because we understand that there's a lot of frustration and concerns around, especially 2477, and we would like to give everybody more time. So I just wanted to make that clear upfront. I also would like to have a lot of discussion around these bills. I think the members have a lot of questions, especially for the department around these bills. So if you can please either stand on your testimony, or if you have something new to add, you know, something that was not in your written testimony, then please feel free to add that new information. Or if somebody has come forward and said what you were already planning to say, then you can just say, you know, I agree with so-and-so, I agree with the other testifiers, to support their testimony. You don't need to just repeat whatever you think that someone else has said already. And that way, we can make sure that we have enough time, because we do have a long agenda. We need to make sure we get through all of these bills before we have to go down for floor session. So with that being said, you know, by all means, please feel free to stand up, say your position. If you have something new to add that's not in your written testimony, or someone has not said before, you can add some, please feel free to add something new, but understand the intent is not to vote on these two bills today. Okay? Okay. So we'll go ahead and get started. First up is House Bill 1809, Vice Chair.
Yep, House Bill 1809 relating to ocean recreation commercial permits, DLNR.
I'm the Chair, to you, and I'm Don Chang, Board of Land and Natural Resources. We oppose this bill, and we stand on our written testimony.
Thank you. Next is Jessie Croft, followed by Blake Moore.
Aloha. Thank you, Chair and Committee. I strongly support HB 1809. It's nice to have a bill that finally gives small businesses some protection. Mahalo.
Thank you. Blake Moore, followed by James Kuhn.
Hi, thank you, Chair. I stand on my written testimony.
Are you Blake?
Sorry, hi, I'm Blake. I stand on my written testimony. Thank you.
Thank you. James Kuhn, followed by Denver Saxton Kuhn.
Aloha, Chair Ishoma, Vice Chair Poi Poi. My name is Jim Kuhn. I'm representing my family business in our 51st year of operation. And this bill is, is not a complete bill yet, but it was introduced by the Ocean Tourism Coalition as, as just a counter to the draconian bills that we saw coming against us. I believe that the answer to if, if permits are going to be taken away, then I think it's like any other taking. I think that the government should compensate the companies that they're putting out of business if that's where, if that's where this is going. But this is, this could use some fine tuning as we go forward, but I surely support this bill. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Denver Saxton Kuhn.
I'll just reiterate what my uncle just said and stand on my written testimony.
Okay, thank you. Don Prestage, followed by Melinda Dent. Okay, do we have Melinda on Zoom?
Good morning and thank you for allowing us to give testimony. I stand on my written testimony in support of HB 1809. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have Chandra Bertsch, followed by Debbie Patton, followed by Ryan Bruner.
Aloha, I am Chandra Birch. I have more to add to my written testimony. I support House Bill 1809. I believe the intention is to ensure that when an ORMA is created, the users and existing users are guaranteed that they still get to continue using that area. We are the caretakers and stewards of those areas for decades and we know the area best and want to be a part of solutions to the problems we are very much aware of. So we support this measure. We want to make sure that we all have continued futures with our businesses. I'd not be able to invest in my team, my company and my community if my permit was at jeopardy at any given time that an ORMA is created. I spend a lot of money to operate our business as sustainably as possible, paying more money to eliminate single-use plastics, offering truly reef save sunscreen onboard, offsetting our carbon footprint and so many more measures that we've taken to go above and beyond and do what we believe is pono. A lot of our money is spent training and developing our team, making sure that they are educating our guests, Hawaiian history, cultural, best practices as well. So we are the businesses that should continue being able to operate the existing ones. If you give it up to a highest bidder situation, you will run out the ones that are trying to do it right. Mahalo.
Thank you. Ryan Bruner, followed by Chris Fried.
Good morning. I actually just want to stand on my written testimony as well on this, but I did make a clerical error and I want to say that I am for this bill and not opposed to it. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Chris Fried, followed by Victoria Martosi.
I stand on my written testimony.
Victoria Martosi, followed by Anella Kialakai.
Thank you, Chair Ishoma, Vice Chair Poi Poi. I appreciate the moment to speak here and I'll try and be brief. While I fully respect DLNR Chair Chang's earlier testimony clarifying that DLNR's intent is not to drive out small business, rather to manage the resource, and that's their area of expertise, business is our area of expertise as a small business on Maui. That lost everything in the fire. And in the face of the DLNR package that make no mistake will end many small businesses. I just believe that laws and rules are an, are an expression of our values. And do we value small business? And so this is one opportunity where I see to add in the intent to value small businesses with long history, members of the community who are invested in this place. So thank you for allowing me to add.
Thank you. Okay, last signed up to testify is Anella Kialakai.
Is this for 1809?
Yes.
I stand by my written testimony. I thought this was 2477.
Okay. Okay, that's all that's signed up. Anyone else wishing to testify?
So just, my name is Nick Croft, just real quick. I stand on my testimony, but just want to add a quick little sentence in there that this is like a little flame of light in a, among a bill package of darkness. So it's nice to feel some hope in there. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else wishing to testify?
Aloha, I am here to strongly support 1809. This bill will protect many families, like many other people have said. We've poured our blood, sweat and tears into these businesses and for them to be able to be taken away is going to destroy many things. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Can you state your name for the record, please?
My name is Calvin Morse.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anyone else? Come on up.
I'd like to testify on Zoom if possible.
Okay, we'll get to you right after the testifier.
Aloha, Terry Wilken-Slycher again, Jack's diving locker managing partner for 42 years. I am in support of this bill and I feel like although I respect what Chair Chang has said, I don't feel, I feel like we are under a personal attack right now by DOR bor and that the goal is to put us out of business. And I really, the reason why we have this bill, we want the opportunity to sit down at the table with DOR bor and work out some real solutions because we know what the problem is. We've been trying to help solve it for a long time, but to deaf ears. And we really feel like if the constituents in the boating industry could actually have a seat at the table with DOR bor, we could work out some really viable solutions because we care about our Ina. The things that have been said here today, you know, they're really important and we do want to protect our resource. We also want to protect our businesses and our families and not end up with more homeless people. You know, I have over 40 employees. Some of these businesses have over 100 employees. And it's not just like they go to work, you know, they're educated. We have people with PhDs, we're out doing scientific research. We have children's programs. We work with teachers. So, you know, we are an important part of the community and, and we're scared right now. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we go to our testifier on Zoom. Oh, okay, we'll hold off on Zoom and then you can go ahead.
Hi, my name is Tim Hendrick from Kanui Charters in Haleiwa, and I want to say I strongly support this bill. It's nice to see something that's going in the right direction and this bill is one of that direction as opposed to all these other bills that seem to just be intent on driving me out of business and hurting my future. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, there was a testifier on Zoom.
Jeremy Salig, I'd like to testify via Zoom.
Okay, Jeremy can testify and then Kainis Shiki to follow.
Sure, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. I just wanted to change my, I had made a clerical error and opposed this bill. I would like to change to supporting this bill and further reading the bill. I can see that it is in favor of supporting small business and I'd like to change my, change to supporting this bill. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Kainis Shiki on Zoom.
Aloha, Kainis Shiki, testifying from Maui. Oh, sorry about that. Okay, just asked to get my video on. Okay, I fully oppose this bill. You know, here in Maui, we have fought against the automatic renewal of commercial use permits. And that is because over the years, holders of these permits have, have now become accustomed to automatic renewals and no one is entitled to a permit. They expire every single year and DLNR has a duty to protect the public trust resources. And, and these businesses increase, increase the number of tourists that they are servicing. And over the years, all of our resources have been negatively impacted. Our harbors like, like Mala Wharf are completely overrun with commercial users when that was supposed to be a recreational place for fishermen to go out of. And so absolutely not should there be a requirement that we have to continue to prioritize tourism and prioritize business interest over the, the public's use of these places and not even looking at, you know, like there should be an EA or an EIS that, and a caring capacity, a biological caring capacity, Kialakai analysis before these permits are just automatically issued. And so definitely not, there should, there should be no sense of entitlement for these permits or number of permits. It should be what can DLNR properly manage? There is zero enforcement until, until commercial use permits can be properly managed, they can properly be, there can be enforcement. This should not, this should not be happening. And you're, I mean, of course, all of the business interests are all here to testify, but you know, like the reef, the fish, the ocean, the general public, we, we can't always be at all of these meetings. So, you know, like we're really relying on, on DLNR and these agencies to be protecting our public trust resources and not, and DOR bor has, has for many years done with business interests being primary. And I think that has to do with leadership and having somebody in leadership at DOR bor that is a former commercial operator. And so bills like this are very, very detrimental to our community, to the environment and to DLNR, whose primary purpose is public trust resources and protecting them for future generations. Allowing rampant commercial activity and with a sense of entitlement with this bill is outrageous. So please do not support this. And the previous bill related to them having the power to look at things like e-foils, you know, we have a huge problem over here with, with DLNR granting permits for e-foils off of Onapali Beach, you know, like a place where it's filled with people swimming and, you know, we have e-foil permits being, being issued. That is so dangerous to public health and safety. So really need to get a handle.
Can you please summarize?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, so we really need to get a handle on prioritizing our public trust resources and not commercial and tourism.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, anyone else wishing to testify?
I would like to just say something. This is Antonette Davis.
Can you please hold off? We have another testifier in the room.
Happy to, happy to.
Hi, my name is Kaina Maikalani Newman. I'm representing Ocean Journeys LLC. We are a sustainable tour provider from Sustainable Tourism Association of Hawaii. We were certified by Hawaii Eco Tourism Association back when it started. We have boat tours out of Waianae and Waikiki. We employ a large amount of the community. We've grown from a smaller operation and we've brought the community with us. We outsource local food. We, we're, we would be deeply impacted if these bills went forward and a lot of community members would lose their jobs or could, you know, not to say they would, but we support this bill and yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify?
Yes, I'd just like to say.
Can you state, what, can you state your name?
Antonette M. Davis, Activities and Attractions Association of Hawaii, and we stand on support of this bill. And just to make a note that it was shared that the DLNR is understaffed, isn't managing, and there is no enforcement. That is the root of a lot of problems and thank you. Fully support this bill. Mahalo.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify?
Sorry, again, I didn't have time to do written testimony. Chris Lee, Kona Shoredivers, and I support this bill.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, members, questions?
I have a quick question. DLNR, commercial fishermen also fall in this category?
No.
No, they're different?
Yes.
Okay, so this is strictly geared for the tourist tours.
Ocean recreational, commercial ocean recreation activity.
Okay, I just wanted to make that clarification, but I also wanted to say more of a comment. If not for these tours, how would someone be able to see the, the island except from a helicopter? I think this is just another option of seeing the whole island and its beauty, but we need to control.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I get that.
I appreciate that. And I, again, I don't think our interest or desire is to shut down the business. It is to better manage it. So you're right, there are different options, but I think there's been a proliferation of commercial activity. And I will admit, DLNR is responsible for a lot of that. We've not properly managed. Now we're trying to do that through these bills, but yes, you're right. There should be other options. Our desire is to better manage this resource and the activity.
And just one more, one more comment. Thank you, Chair. Is it, isn't it better, I think, to sit down with these organizations periodically and kind of talk about these issues? Because I've been on a ride, because I haven't seen a part of my island, Kauai, and the only way I could see it is through that tour. But I really did respect how they were very pono to the environment, to the ocean and how they, they educated the tourists on how to take care of the land. So just, just a comment from me.
No, thank you very much for that. And there's no, I mean, I have greatly appreciated everybody who has come. Apparently this is a very important issue. We have had numerous, I mean, we meet with the Fishers Working Group, we meet in Levaia Pono, we have met with other communities. When we went out to Mala, the Maui, Mala Wharf, we had 200 people. So there's no doubt, we have been trying to meet with the community, perhaps not everybody here. I do know that Ed is having a meeting right after this with members who have flown in. So yes, we probably should have done more outreach. We probably should have done more meetings, but I think we're at the point of, we're reaching a threshold where the tension, the community tension- the community tension, what you heard from Kainis Shiki, is reflective of many communities statewide. We've heard that on Maui, we hear that on Hawaii Island, on Kauai. So I think this is DLNR's attempt. Now whether the legislature decides to pass these or not. Clearly, this is the beginning of a longer-term conversation. But we need the tools to better manage these resources. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, no more questions? We'll move on to HB 2477 relating to commercial ocean recreation operations. DLNR.
Good morning, members, Chair and Vice Chair, members of the committee. Don Chang, Chair of the Board of Land and Natural Resources. Again, I'm going to just, I know that you're deferring this matter, but I'd like to provide some additional context. This is an admin bill. It is second of four DoBar bills. This, this is a rather comprehensive bill. It does, it does address the issue of, of commercial use permits. It prohibits the transfers from, when you sell a company. We've had situations where we've had, let's say, we, we have a, a limit on the permits of 10. But when, when we came in to adopt those limits, those restrictions, there were 25 permits that had already been issued. The Attorney General's Office has told us we have to, we have to honor grandfather all of those 25. We thought that through attrition, we could get those permits down. But what these companies do is they buy and sell the company and the permit is the only, or one of the major assets. So the permit goes with the new company. So for some of these places, we have never been able to bring the, the numbers down to the actually permitted numbers. This will also exempt legacy businesses. We recognize there are many people here who want to pass their business on to their families. So we will permit. This bill does allow for the transfer to, to what we call legacies or descendants, family members. I think those are the most, and then the final one, probably the most contentious here, is public auction. Currently, we do issue permits through a waitlist or we did, we do them through, if it's a new activity. For example, on, on Hawaii Island, we had Kahului Surf permits. We issued those through a lottery and we are right now in litigation on that. So this bill would actually permit us to do an unsealed public auction. When we have an issue, when we have a situation where we've got more permits than we have the permitted number, we would then have a public auction only of those permitted, permities to auction off for the limited numbers. So that's one of the other provisions with this bill. Thank you. I'm available for any comments as well.
Thank you, Chair Chang. Just to clarify, we're not deferring this bill indefinitely.
Yes.
We're deferring it to Tuesday.
Yes, no, 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 I apologize. Yes, indeed.
So I want to make sure we're all clear on that point. And so just a reminder again, we do want to have a lot of time for discussion. So if you have anything new to add to your testimony or something that hasn't been said already, please feel free to testify to those points. Okay?
Okay, next is Kaevi Berry Island View Hawaii, followed by Ryan Plunkett from Aquatic Lifetivers. Okay, Ryan Plunkett. On Zoom? Okay, not present. Kevin Tenny, followed by Ryan Bruner. Okay, we'll go Ryan Bruner, followed by Reese Williams.
Hi, my name is Reese Williams. I operate Hawaii Shark Encounters with a childhood friend of mine. And we strongly oppose this bill. One of the reasons that we strongly oppose this bill is because we did buy this business from a family friend. And that wouldn't be something that we could do to a family friend in the future. So like I said, I just want to say we strongly oppose this bill.
Thank you. Okay, Ryan Bruner or Kevin Tenny? Okay.
Hey, what's up, guys? I'm Kevin Tenny. I'm a Oahu resident, North Shore lifeguard on the North Shore. And I also own a commercial permit out of Haleiwa Harbor. And I'm a boat captain as well. I've worked my entire life for this, to get to this point where we're at. And I think we all have. And for you guys to kind of step in and kind of say you want to strip us away from this is kind of mind baffling. The journey has been beyond hard. I can't even explain how hard it has been to get to this point right now. We've all invested hundreds and thousands of dollars, blood, sweat, and tears throughout our businesses. We've taken risks, spent a lot of money to build up our companies from the ground up. 2477 strips all of this away, strips everything away from us. This bill speaks to impose impossible, ridiculous fees, regulations, processes for commercial boating operations. By imposing these arbitrary but detrimental regulations, the state will devalue these companies for their own greed while making it more and more difficult for the average guy to operate a business. For my business alone, this is going to cost me an extra $15,000 a year. I don't know if you guys or whoever's making these laws understands how hard it is to add an extra $15,000 to what we already have to do. And then at the end of the day, you guys are just going to auction that off. So we just, see you later. Goodbye. This bill is pretty unimaginable. For any other business off, imagine a restaurant or any other business, shipping company, stuff like that. Do you imagine doing this to them? No business will be allowed to run. So why us? Why do you guys come after us, a small group here? You're not doing it to everybody else. It's coming to us first, a small group of hardworking guys. Last year, the Chambers of, the Chamber of Commerce cited that overregulation is one of the most common challenges in the Hawaii economic growth and hardship for business owners. So why more? Why are you going to add more rules to us? It's already almost impossible to get by. Just two weeks ago, Hawaii was ranked number 42 in the country as being the hardest state to run a business, yet number one for the highest cost of living. And final, most of us here, we have given, we've been given zero notice. I found out about this on Friday, as long as all my other friends. I probably called around 100 people on Friday and not one of them knew about this. Our harbor managers didn't know about this. No one involved knew about it. DLNR didn't give any of us notice. Literally Friday, we found out about this. Now we're here doing this right now. How do you want us to combat that without giving us proper notification? It's pretty mind baffling. And we are commercial permit holders. We didn't get an email from anybody, no phone call, no nothing. It's just absurd, you guys. I strongly oppose this bill. It's unconstitutional. Hawaii is the toughest state to start and operate a business. These new regulations only add difficulty of being a business owner in this state. This will only benefit the government, not the proposal of the local residents and owners. We're here to help the community, but this seems pretty greedy to me. It looks like Adolf Hitler wrote this. I don't know who wrote it, but it's pretty mind baffling. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll look again for Ryan Bruner, followed by Jesse Croft.
Good morning. My name is Ryan Bruner. I just want to stand on my testimony, saying that I oppose this bill. I'll be back next Tuesday to give a, a longer testimony. And I appreciate your time, guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jesse Croft, followed by Reese Williams.
Sorry, I'm still laughing from the end. He pretty much said a lot of what I wanted to say. The guy to back from now, I don't know his name. I guess I'm just humbly begging you guys to please defer this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Reese Williams, followed by Porter Turnbull. Okay, Porter Turnbull?
Porter's going to be on Zoom because he has COVID.
Okay, on Zoom? Okay. Okay, we'll move on to Kaleel Fernandez, followed by Justin Smith.
I'm Justin.
Okay, you can go ahead.
All right, I basically stand on my written testimony, but, and I oppose this. And I have a written that is a brief of that, but I'm going to abbreviate it even a little bit more for you. And I appreciate you deferring about this and thinking about it longer. So a couple of things, you know, this, besides it impacting everyone's livelihood and, you know, jobs, the overall economy of Hawaii, this bill, this bill is solely based on a few individuals' subjective opinions and their feel facts. There hasn't really been, like, even the numbers when they're talking about overages, that's in a very few areas. So it's really like Keahoe, Honocahu, on the ramps, not in the water in Honocahu. On Kauai, there's only a few areas where there are these overages. Yet the bill is written to affect 100% of the companies. 100%. And they say, oh, well, you can pass your company on if you are, have children to pass it on to. So the family dynasties are okay? That's the only option? It, it, it just really doesn't make any sense. And the other really important thing that I want to point out here is that what this does is it really, all these companies make very large capital investments in their boats and in the fleet. And right now, compared to the rest of the world, Hawaii has a world-class fleet of commercial vessels. And when you take the ability for a company to sell the company that they build or not know when DLNR is going to take the permit away from them, they're not going to invest the same money into their fleet. So Hawaii as a state is going to end up with a fleet of boats that are degrading and becoming less safe. And we're going to have more accidents because people won't want to make those capital investments in their company. Lots of people are going to go out of business and we're going to have less safe boats. And I think that's a really important thing to look at here. I could talk about the money, I could talk about everything else. But really look at, these overages are a very small percentage of the areas and they're going to take this away from everyone. This is very poorly written. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Blake Moore, followed by Jim Kuhn. Okay. Jim Kuhn, followed by Jonathan Droge. Is Jonathan on Zoom? Not present. Dexter Denver Saxton Kuhn, followed by Peter Wood.
Hi, thanks for having us today, Blake Moore. I don't think I could say it any better than Ryan said it out in the hall. But I, you know, we would just implore you guys. We know that you're pushing this off to Tuesday. Many of us have flown over today to, you know, make sure you understand the impacts, you know, that it would have on us and our families. You know, I would agree with Justin that, you know, creating a situation of family dynasties in Hawaii, there's no opportunity for business partners to go into business and sell off to one while the other wants to leave. Makes it incredibly difficult to do business in Hawaii, a spot that's already very difficult. So we appreciate you deferring and we encourage you to consider doing that as a permanent measure. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Peter Wood, followed by Zachary Lepraid. Okay. Zachary Lepraid, followed by Kevin Wilson. Okay.
Aloha, Zachary Lepraid, Vice Chair, Chair, Members of the Committee. I'll be quick. I just want to bring up one point for the committee if they aren't aware of that. About two sessions ago, our industry collaborated with the Department of Aquatic Resources to institute the Dollar Ocean Stewardship Special Fund. We met prior to the legislative session to discuss the bill and the impact on the members of our community. And we were diligent in making sure the funds were applied to our areas that we impacted. And we asked the DLNR to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin Wilson, followed by Peter Wood.
Good morning. I am Kevin Wilson, on behalf of Ocean Outfitters Hawaii on the North Shore of Haleiwa and Hawaii Glass Bottom Boats. I oppose this bill for the safety of all of our family members and our community. While we understand the need of the regulatory frameworks to manage commercial ocean recreation operations, we firmly believe that the proposed charges in this bill are not in the best interest. I'm going to keep it short. Ocean Outfitters Hawaii and Hawaii Glass Bottom Boats are committed to responsible and sustainable practices in commercial ocean recreation, as well as bringing awareness to our oceans. We are very educated with ocean safety. We kindly request the committee to reconsider the implications of this bill. And thank you for my time. I'll have more next week.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, Peter Wood, followed by Nick Croft. Okay, Nick Croft, followed by Aaron McCormick.
Hello again. My name is Nick Croft. I stand on my testimony, just to add a few things. I'm kind of glad I don't have to read mine because you might see a grown man cry up here. So kind of thank you. But just to add on to like attrition and permits and whatnot, just in the last like six months, maybe less, three permits have been attritioned at our harbor already. So if that already happened that quick, how many more can they find? And not take out the small guys like us who will literally lose everything. I'm not talking about just my business, but my house, my everything. I mean, even when I signed for the permit, just to go and put my name on it, I had to give a $5,000 check, just to sign it. Some guys got to pay up to $25,000 just to sign it. So we put all this money, all this time and our heart and soul in it for years and years and years, just for it to all be pulled out from underneath our feet. So it's like, do I get compensation for that? Like, where are all of my, how do I pay my loans? I've got hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of loans and stuff I had to pay off. And without that, who pays for it? How do I pay for it? Anyway, that's all. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Eric McCormick, followed by Don Prestige.
Good morning. My name is Eric McCormick. I'm here representing Kona Boat Rentals on the Big Island of a business owner for 23 years. Lived in the islands for over 40. A lot has been said, which I have in my testimony, but there are some points that I'd like to add. Specifically about the money. A proposed monthly increase for commercial use permits from a minimum of 300 to a proposed minimum of $2,000 per month. Where does this number come from? The only explanation I can come up with, that's a number from the sky that allows room for negotiation, negotiation lower. Even if this number was halved, it is excessive and arbitrary. This is a 666% increase to existing small business permit holders. For reference, it will cost, the increase in permit costs annually for us from $18,000 to $120,000. The cost is excessive, unsubstantiated by costs and clearly discriminatory on small business, meaning smaller boats, six-packs. We will cease to operate with non-transferable permits. The business is too expensive, not worth the effort. I believe the department just lost the revenue and state taxes, GAT, and permit fees. Add our staff to the unemployment lines. The net result will be that only large commercial vessels, 40 to 125 packs, will be able to handle the fees. Ironically, these fees provide the greatest environmental impact at one location, these, these boats. The only four, the only fair method that I see is to charge a percented interest on a revenue basis. That way, it's equal across all size vessels. Honocahu Harbor initially had 35 permits. In 2010, the DLNR leased another 18, making it 53. I've been operating through that transition. I'm here to state that even when one of the ramps was closed down for over two years, we operated and worked amongst ourselves as a community rather well. There was no conflict. We realized we had to deal with the situation and handled it amongst us as professional boat operators. Before any discussion about limiting or taking people's permits unjustly from them, there needs to be an EIS or an environmental study to look at the usage at these ramps, to look at the businesses, and to really see what's going on. Testimony from few people says there are problems in specific areas. That may be so. But some of these bills are far-reaching and cover all areas. That's not necessarily the best solution. So not only am I glad that you're deferring this, I'd actually ask you that you discard it. To prohibit business owners, the ability to sell their business with permits is an affront to capitalism. A business cannot operate commercially without them. A business currently pays a large transfer fee to the state when selling one entity between 5,000 and 75,000. Where does that money go? The concept of free enterprise is being undermined. The concept of free enterprise is being undermined. The proposed fee increase is a money grab. Substantiated, arbitrary, excessive, and not budgeted. It'll definitely force a lot of businesses and people out of jobs. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Don Prestige, followed by Antonette M. Davis. Antonette M. Davis, followed by Paul Exner.
Aloha, Kaka Kaka again. Chair and Vice Chair and Members of the Committee, I would like to ask a question regarding point of order. Many of the people that are present are not, you know, familiar with process, and I guess I'm revealing there's part of this that I am not. Would you defer to decision? My experience has been at the decision hearing, there is no testimony, and there's not an opportunity to discuss it anymore. Could you confirm that for me, please? Or tell me I'm wrong, and that you actually allow people to speak at decision-making?
Ms. Davis, this is a time for testifiers to share their comments and feelings on the proposed measure. Sorry, it's not the right time for questions.
I apologize, but that's been my experience. There's no time to discuss, so this is the moment to grab it, so I'm going to grab it. Activities and Attractions Association strongly opposes this bill. As I pointed out before, and as people that are kind of on the other side of the fence, the DLNR is understaffed, mismanaged, they haven't done a great job. I personally have reached out to Don Chang. I have had great relationships with previous Suzanne Case, Tim Johns, Peter Young, and even to this day, I still have relationships with these people. Don Chang did not call me back, did not email with me. And kudos to Ed Underwood. He has talked with, I represent a lot of these businesses here, small businesses in Hawaii, that have worked their whole life for this. This undermines and takes their business away. There is a legal term that is inverse condemnation. It makes it so if you do this, you need to pay them market value. It kind of goes along the lines of eminent domain. This is wrong. This is so wrong, and these small businesses have not come to the table. There has been not a discussion of what they do, and they are such an asset to this. I don't testify, I'm not a paid, you know, I work for a trade association. I'm not a paid mount. My kids grew up here, I've lived here for more than half my life, I love this place. I'm not speaking as, you know, as something that I don't personally fully and committed to and believe in. And I have to look at my testimony, I'm sorry. I just want to make sure I have the points, and it's not something that hasn't already been said. The thing is, I'd like to see where these permits are that are so over-commercialized to detriment. I don't know where the 10 permits has gone to 24. Malawar was mentioned before. There's one permit, one permit that was grandfathered in. And there have been fishermen that testify at hearings, there's a lot of bullying that goes on. And there have been fishermen that testify at hearings and say there's not an issue. And I personally have gone down there on holiday weekends and seen there's not an issue. If you look back at the DLNR hearings, you'll see people kind of chuckle a little bit because there's a complaint about having to wait for 20 minutes to launch your boat. And when the ah here going in Kauai, evidently you've got to park miles away, and you've got to wait, and it's what we do. We're a community, we need to work together, and we need to unite. I would like to see the information on this, which is in my testimony, of where these places are, where this is being generated from, because that is the impetus of this whole package that DLNR has introduced.
Can you please summarize?
Okay. Oh goodness, I just strongly oppose this bill. It is, we, our economy is already in a poor state, especially on Maui. This is not the time to do this kind of thing. Tourism is down, we're going to experience a really slow year. This is not the time, and all the people that this impacts need to be at the table before anything like this happens. Thank you so much for the opportunity to testify. I'm available for questions.
Thank you. Paul Exner, followed by Ryan Hopper.
Yes, hello. This is Paul Exner. I can't make my video work for some reason, but let me see if it comes up now. Oh, there I am. I'm assuming, because all I can see is myself, that I'm still live with everyone. My name is Paul Exner. I represent Modern Geographic Sailing. I oppose 2476 and 2477 with this testimony specifically. I have to say, before I make three points that are in addition to my written testimony, for the first time in the past two days of a lifetime of ocean recreation, I have looked toward the ocean with sadness and fear from administration, not a continuum of environment or oceanography. The three points I'd like to make, which I think are a little unique, is first and foremost, the community perception of the operators in this industry as boat captains. But formally, we are merchant mariners. In order to do our business, we are federally licensed. We are 100% drug-free, we cannot consume alcohol. We are tested and highly experienced to operate in one of the most challenging environments in the United States to run a boat. The mariners, my colleagues here, are of the most experience and professional, and I have vast experience worldwide. They are accomplished people, responsible people, and as many people have said, probably the first stewards of the environment in which they operate. Merchant mariners are actually afforded certain protectionistic rights federally. We are part of the critical maritime infrastructure. The vessels that we own and operate are also federally documented vessels. The very permits that we operate under are tied to the critical infrastructure of the United States. I want to bring up for a moment regarding these ocean vessels that go to sea. Should any of the permits be taken away from these vessels? Where are they going to go? You can't just pull it up on land where you're going to park it. Who's going to pay for it? If the vessel was forced to leave the state of Hawaii because it had to operate somewhere else, there are critical systems that are already sustained on these vessels, but what if it doesn't coincide with the time of year to transport the vessel to some other location? It's not just, many of these vessels need to be hauled out and blocked on land somewhere, which incur incredible expense.
Mr. Exner, can you please summarize?
Sure.
Thank you.
I am opposed to these, to these bills, and I would like to add that the 3,000-foot orma is a distance that is slightly more than a half a mile. And if you operate on Big Island, everyone knows here that we need to operate within 3,000 feet because the wave height is two to three times the size. That needs to be very carefully considered. So in summary, I oppose these bills. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Ryan Hopper, followed by Nathaniel Fisher.
Good morning. Captain Ryan Hopper, owner-operator, North Shore Sport Fishing in Haleiwa. I'm here today with most of my friends, we all should be on the water today, so that we can discuss this bill that I strongly oppose. This would be devastating to us. Most of us here have spent our entire life to create a business, doing something that we love, that for our family, for our community. We love what we do. I don't know of many people that have a job that would get up seven days a week, 4:00 a.m., let's go, fishing, working on the boat, drive to Honolulu, come spend all your money on supplies, spend the rest of the day working on the boat, making it proper, making it right, so that we can take guests out. People that are traveling here, people that are residents here, take them out fishing, show them what we know, what we do. Come back, they can enjoy their fish. Our fish is distributed throughout the community. A lot of what you guys will eat this week have been caught by somebody sitting here today, who should be out there today catching fish for you to eat later on. I'm concerned that we're going to get deferred till Tuesday. I'm not sure what that means. I don't really know how the process works. Do we have to not work on Tuesday as well? Who will be making the decision? That's what we're concerned about. We know that it would devastate us if they decided to say, okay, this is the number of permits, this is how many we're going to issue. Everybody get together, hold a card up, make your bid, buy your business back. Buy the business back that you spent your whole life building. And then in the end, when you're worn out from seven days a week, 4:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., when the boat's worn out, what do you have left? A business that you give back for them to resell to somebody else. I think it's ridiculous. I strongly oppose this bill. There's a lot of people here that do, as you can see, and I hope that we can make this go away. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Nathaniel Fisher, followed by Melinda Dent.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, and Members of the Committee. My name is Nathaniel Fisher, owner-operator of Nepali Experience Boat Tours on the island of Kauai. I am in strong opposition of Bill HB 2477, which aims to reduce commercial boat permits in the most heinous and obnoxious way. The technique presented sounds like some sort of financial gladiator pit, forcing existing permissions to bid against each other.
We have your written testimony in front of us. If you can just please summarize.
Okay. I guess all I'd like to add is, I am at one of the harbors on Kauai that is considered to be an overage, and I know of many, many solutions, and all I want is just some sort of meeting with the high-level DLNR that's coming up with this stuff. I'm a solutionary, I have the plans, and I will add that they have accepted a meeting tomorrow, and so the discussion should be going tomorrow morning. Thank you.
Thank you. Melinda Dent, followed by Shandra Birch.
Good morning again, Chair and Vice Chair and Committee Members. I strongly oppose HB 2477. For our company, it would be 150% increase in the fees that we now pay. Our company is in its 53rd year of business, and I've never heard any of our permits referred to as being grandfathered in. So I'm not sure when they say some permits are grandfathered in, and, you know, that is part of the problem, that there's so many permits. I know for a fact that in 2013, DOR Bor wanted to put in additional six moorings in Keahoe Bay, and the Keahoe Canoe Club took them to court, rejoined and hired an engineering company to prove with the waves and the conditions in that bay that it would be unsafe, the way that sea engineering laid out these additional moorings. So it is something that has been, I would say, poor management from DOR Bor's part, that they are feeling, that they are seeing so many permits in certain areas that are causing the problems. This is an unfair way to take care of it, to say we can't sell our commercial permits, because basically that means we don't, our businesses are worthless. We happen to be a family business that have, the third generation is now involved in the business, they're not totally running it, they are involved. That doesn't mean at some point they're not going to need to sell, or want to sell, or their children aren't going to want to. So that's not necessarily the answer either. So I would strongly ask you to kill this bill and ask DOR Bor to sit down with O T C and come to a solution that works for everyone. All right? Thank you so much.
Thank you. Shandra Birch, followed by Greg Longnecker.
Aloha, I'm Shandra Birch. I am a resident of Kauai, general manager and co-owner of Hola Hola Charters. We operate a boat tour along Kauai. I'm also part of the Ocean Tourism Coalition and the Sustainable Tourism Association of Hawaii. We are a certified operator with them. This poses a complete attack on the boating industry, which is where my dreams have come true. I'm a Kauai girl, I went away to college, I wanted to come home and find a good job, and I did. I got to get involved in a wonderful, amazing local company. I worked hard, proved myself, and the founder of the company has now given me ownership opportunity. This is how these things can work. If they don't have a child that's invested in that business, who can they give it to? They don't give it to anyone, it goes away, all of their hard work and effort for years and years and years, and the sacrifices and the stress and the money and the time that they have committed is for nothing, nothing. And it just disappears. So I'm very passionate about this. This career, this industry has given me my purpose, it's allowed me to support my family, and I am proud to support Kauai families with the people we employ. DOR Bor should not be allowed to prevent commercial use permits from being transferred. I would not be able to live my dream if that was the case. DOR Bor should not be allowed to arbitrarily reduce the number of permits unless compensation is provided. DOR Bor created this problem. We can recognize there is a problem, we know that, we are participating, we are dealing with this on a daily basis, and we're making it work every day. But we do recognize the issues, and we're here to talk about them, and we'd like to have real conversations about the solutions, because we have ideas that have not been heard. Penalizing law-abiding citizens and businesses for government failure is not acceptable. It's not our fault as businesses. The only tool DOR Bor should be given to rectify their problem of over-issuing commercial permits is to buy the business at fair market value. Use those fees that they collect from us to go into a special fund and have all that money be used entirely to buy back permits at fair market value. Take the average sale price of the last three permits, adjust it for inflation, there's your fair market price. That's the only acceptable solution for this, in my opinion. The effects of this bill will destroy the commercial ocean industry, sacrificing jobs, livelihoods, careers, passions. To continue to summarize my written testimony, I don't take for granted the amazing privilege that we have in showing guests the most beautiful areas of our state. It is a privilege and a responsibility. It is not a right, I understand that, and I'm happy to abide by the laws, pay the fees needed, and make sure that we're operating in a pono way with our community. Instead of all penalizing 100% of the businesses for this government mistake, ensure those who are operating rightfully, responsibly, do so with the health and the community of and environment in mind. So put burdens on the people who aren't operating properly, disincentivize that business. The market will adapt, and permits will go away with our attrition, and the market will balance itself.
Can you please conclude? Thank you.
To reiterate, one of the issues is on the west side of Kauai in Kikiola Harbor. DOR Bor literally created this issue. For the last 10 to 20 years, the management there, this is a direct result of that leadership, pushing permits through against the wishes of the Kauai District Manager at the time, who sought to enforce limits for the harbor. DOR Bor disagreed, leadership disagreed, and pushed permits through. They opened floodgates. DOR Bor literally cold-called existing businesses and said, do you want a permit? Do you want a permit? Do you want a permit? Now here we are. This is an issue they created. They should not be allowed to just take that away completely without any compensation for the investment these business owners and community members have put into the company. Thank you for your time and for listening to all of us, because we are very passionate about this. Mahalo.
Thank you. Greg Longnecker, followed by Byron Kay. Greg Longnecker, followed by Byron Kay. Okay, Byron Kay, followed by Sean Doyle. Byron Kay on Zoom. Okay, Sean Doyle, followed by Okay, Brandon Kuakini, followed by Angela Thomas. Okay, Ro O'Rourke, followed by Chris Fried. Chris Fried, followed by Sean Rotella.
Hello, and thank you for letting me speak. I operate a fishing charter business at Haleiwa Harbor. I'm strongly against this bill. This bill does not embody the aloha spirit. This bill is greedy and is focused on squeezing as much profits as possible out of the commercial operators. And I didn't get a commercial permit to become a fisherman, to make a lot of money. I did this to share fishing with the world. Fishing is a Hawaiian tradition. And I didn't do this to make money. I just feel like deferring till Tuesday, is that when this bill is deferred to? So we have to come back?
This is a time for you to give your testimony and comments. Sorry, it's not the time for questions.
Okay, well, this has to do with that. I just don't think this is the right way to handle an issue. There should be a forum where DLNR and commercial operators can collaborate on regulating the industry. All of us here, we had to scramble just to make it here today. Like Kevin Tenney said, we were unaware of this bill. And we became aware of it last Friday. And everybody dropped what they're doing to be here. And we had to organize. And I just don't think it's the right forum. And deferring it for another week, that doesn't give us opportunity to work with the DLNR. I know it was mentioned earlier that DLNR is having a meeting with outer island folks that flew over here today. That's positive. But I think it should be deferred indefinitely until we can all sit down and have time to have this conversation. Because I understand the next time this bill comes up, you're going to vote on it. So that's like finality to the issue. And that's within one week? Or that's why I'm asking, this is deferred till Tuesday?
I'd be happy to speak with you after the hearing to clarify any questions.
Obviously, this is a financial issue for DLNR. And there's a Bill HB 2475. And that bill pertains to giving
Can you just testify on the bill that's in front of us, please?
Strongly oppose. Create a forum where we can get together with DLNR and sort this out and not spring it on us. That is all.
Thank you. Okay, next up is Sean Rotella, followed by Carly Powell.
Sean Rotella, Kaileuakona. Sorry, I'm slightly emotional, so I'll try to keep it together. We are lavaya. We are kaifa'a. We are hei'ina'au. We're not entitled rich people who just rape the ocean for money. We love what we do. We love it. I strongly oppose the bill. I stand on my written testimony. But I would like to add that there's language that's very alarming to me about overages. It's been made very clear through several testimonies that overages seem to be prevalent in almost every facility. And language that I read says that we would be able to revoke 100% of permits and then only auction off what is allowed. That's terrifying. That's a bloodbath. And that's the richest man wins. And I just, that's not democracy. That's not who we are. That is not aloha. That is cruel. I would love to be able to discuss this with DLNR, DOR Bor, like several other people had. Meetings about this should be open discussion. There's obviously a problem. And I'll summarize, but I strongly oppose. I hope this gets deferred to a point where we're willing to work with DLNR, willing to. We'd love to solve the problem on a very reasonable solution that is not going to just destroy everything and let a few phoenixes rise from the ashes. It's not acceptable. And thank you guys for your time. And I would also like to just say that I have no ill will towards DLNR, DOR Bor, that I would love to work alongside them with reasonable pono solutions that everyone can benefit from. I think that's where we need to get to, and that's what time would allow. Thank you.
Thank you. Carly Powell, followed by Victoria Martosi.
I'm Carly Powell. Thank you, Chair and members, for your time. I stand by my written testimony in opposition.
Thank you. Victoria Martosi, followed by David Yester.
Aloha, my name is Victoria Martosi. My husband and I have a small scuba business in Lahaina. And we do both boat diving activities and shore entry activities, both of which require permits through DOR Bor. Our business started in 1983. This is our 41st year in business, which is a number I'll ask you to remember in just a few moments. Earlier Chair Chang said that they need the tools to manage the resource here and that stakeholder tensions are part of that. And I feel like that's misplaced blame on the rule-following permates. I think that what we're talking about, and we can see it in our harbors, is a lack of funding. When DOR Bor received the small boat harbors from DOT, that did not come with any funding to go with it. And so rather than talking about mismanagement of permates, because I feel very managed, I think what we're dealing with is mismanagement of facilities because of underfunding. If you look at any of the environmental assessments that relate to building of these small boat harbors and facilities, they have language in them that references size based on current population and when these facilities will need to be improved to grow with our population growth on all of these islands. And my small boat harbor in Lahaina has one permit over, all inherited from DOT. These permits have been in existence for 40 years. Our business has been in existence for 41 years. So we were part of that transition. When enforcement Okay, following my notes. Enforcement has been understaffed and missing as well. So the mismanagement piece, I cannot say enough. Does not relate to the permates. It relates to these other issues. The permates are the scapegoat, the easy target, the low-hanging fruit.
Can you please summarize? Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. There are so many issues with this bill that I strongly oppose. There was earlier weekends and holidays. There's ways that DOR Bor will minimize its revenue through actions like these proposed. And then it's clear to see that they need to recoup that by increasing the rates. I don't have any children. My husband and I don't have any children. But I mentored many. And I know so many people who, through years of working in the industry, eventually buy their own business to do this. I will not be able to pass this business on to the people that I've mentored. They will not have that chance. And my husband and I, who have worked toward, yes, our livelihood, with respect, being part of the community, we will not have the chance to have the retirement that we've worked so hard toward without the ability to sell our business or without having our business value completely undermined. So thank you for the opportunity to testify. Termination of permits bad.
Thank you. David Yester, followed by Tim Hondrick. Clayton Kubo on Zoom.
Okay. I saw Dave Yester out there in the hallway.
Okay, we'll get him when he comes in.
If you want to do the Zoom first, it's fine.
Yeah, we'll go to Clayton Kubo on Zoom.
Clayton Kubo, Waimea, Kauai. I have no interest in this permit situation. But I am here to testify in opposition. Is it their fault, the permit holders? Is it their fault that they got these permits? The overage? I don't think so. It lies in the hands of DOR Bor. Okay? You guys need to realize what is going on. And these business owners, they spent a lot of time, effort. Right now, they're getting one major, like, heart attack action going on because they are being attacked. So in the end, I hear a testimony saying, oh, lack of enforcement. But don't care. Just hired. I think when the hiring is all over for Kauai, there probably going to be about 10 new or even 11 new additional. So lack of enforcement? No, there is a lot of enforcement to, meaning future. Yeah? And speaking for Kea'ola Small Boat Harbor, I am a stakeholder. I grew up around that harbor. Okay? I was one of the first guys to actually ask for capital improvement funds for an additional boat ramp that would alleviate, and I'm going to say again, alleviate the congestion. I don't know when the construction is going to begin. I'm still waiting. So in the end, please think about what you guys are doing. You guys are going to be affecting a lot of people. It's just like the fishing issue. Same thing. Attack. Mahalo nui, rap'i chiama, rap'i poi. I look forward to having more discussions with you guys, especially this whole committee.
Thank you.
Mahalo nui to you, re'a di. Okay? Aloha.
I just want to note for everybody, members of the public and the committee, it is almost 11 o'clock. We have to be down at floor session at 12. We still have a number of bills to go on this agenda. And I would ask for your help in allowing the committee to have some time to ask questions of the people who have testified, including the department. And if we continue to have lots and lots of testimony, we won't have time for those questions, which I think is really important to this discussion. So we just ask for your help. Thank you.
My name is Tim Hondrick. I believe my written testimony didn't get submitted correctly. So I'm just going to briefly summarize. I was to voice a strong opposition to this bill. It's an awful bill. Will destroy the livelihoods and careers of many commercial operators. Also, it'll make it nearly impossible for future generations of mariners to carve out a business in Hawaii. Personally, I have mortgaged my future in order to start and grow a charter fishing company. This bill would allow DOR Bor to indiscriminately rescind my permit without any legal grants to stand on. I played by the rules. I waited 10 years for a permit. Waited 10 years. There's other people waiting right now. My retirement is this business, which depends on my permit. I love what I do. I take people fishing. I give them the experience of a lifetime. When I take their picture, holding up a fish, I say, send me a Christmas card. I get Christmas cards every year. What did I do wrong? Operating charter boats expensive. I had a smaller vessel until I obtained a permit. When I obtained a permit, I borrowed from my retirement to buy a bigger boat. I set up an LLC. Paid lawyers. Now I have to maintain my boat. I have to insure my boat, passengers and crew. Between the permit, slip fees, and maintenance and insurance, I'm out $50,000 each year before I even put a drop of ice or a drop of fuel in my boat. the fees to 2,000 a month and adding a CAM fee that has no limit would torpedo and sink my boat, my business and my dreams. What did I do wrong? I look forward to many good years ahead running charters. I love the ocean. I love fishing. I'm not naive to the fact that the heavy hands of time will catch up to me one day. There will be a day when I will need to sell my business. Except for my boat and tackle, under this bill, my business would be worthless. My wife, my son and daughter have no interest in fishing. However, I have a Hana'i son who I've looked after since his dad, also my fishing partner, died years ago. He got his captain's license before graduating high school. Under this bill, he can't take over this business. This bill destroys small business and ruins lives. What did I do to deserve this? Thank you for considering my testimony as a voter in the state of Hawaii and a small business owner and as a fisherman, as a human, and as a father. I ask you to examine the evil in this bill. This is a bad bill and cannot be allowed to advance further. I respectfully ask this Congress, what are you going to do?
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we have Chris Haynes, followed by Candace La Croix. Okay, that's all we have signed up to testify. Is there anyone else wishing to testify?
One person on Zoom. Oh, okay, good. Go ahead. If you want to testify, if you can line up by the bulletin board. That way, we don't have folks coming in and out of the chairs. And then we'll just take you in the order that you're standing. And again, we really would like to have a discussion about this bill. If we're not able to do that, then
I'll be really quick.
Thank you.
Kaina Makalani, Ocean Journeys LLC. I just want to propose, like, axing certain language in the bill. Primarily the holidays that was brought up too, and weekends. Oftentimes, we're tourism, we're seasonal. So like, we lost a lot of money with this past month. January's slow, February's slow. There's slow times. The weekend and holidays are when tourists come. That's when we make money. If we're unable to operate on holidays, we would have to lay off, we'd have to downsize. It would impact the business greatly. So I think that should be asked. And it sounds like there's a lot of issues with certain areas. And this bill is a broad sweep. So maybe going back to, you know, thinking about sustainability and community solutions, maybe going to each and seeing what the best solution is for each. Putting, getting the harbor master's opinion, getting the community leaders involved. Because Hana'i is different than the sandbar. You know what I mean? Kauai, Maui, they're all different. So putting this big bill that impacts everybody the same, just mahain doesn't make sense to me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is Eric Robinson. Doug Chen and I submitted written testimony, and I won't repeat that here. And I understand the time constraints wonder, so I want to make three points. One, it's clear that the industry wants to be part of the solution. They want to work collaboratively. Despite the fact that they're all competitors, they want to work together to help improve the perceived overcrowding right now. And I appreciate what Chair Chang says about not having the intent to destroy businesses here. But unfortunately, that's going to be the effect. And to Administrator Underwood's credit, he has taken the time to start to sit down with Doug Chen and myself and with operators. But I think we need to keep that conversation going to help improve what's going on and not push this bill through. Second, if attrition has not been successful, the way we address that is through refinement. For example, you refine the minimum standards required to renew a permit. And you fine-tune the conditions on transfer. You don't apply a blunt instrument like this bill to fix that. Then finally, the permit cap numbers are stale. As I understand, the limits on each permit out of each harbor were inherited from DOT harbors. And when those came into administrative regulations, that was in 2014. They're 10 years old. I think, probably stating the obvious here to say that. In the 10 years since then, the harbors have changed and they've been improved. So I think it would be justified to relook at those numbers as well. Thank you for your time again, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee.
Thank you.
Aloha. My name is Javier Cantalops. Thank you guys so much for letting us speak. I thank you for your patience. I am the owner and operator of Maui Dreams Dive Company and Island-style diving out of Maui. I'm also a combat veteran. I'm a master scuba diver trainer, master freediving instructor, master captain. I've worked my entire life to be able to be privileged enough to stand in front of you as an owner-operator and testify today. I purchased Mike Severn's diving several years ago from the renowned Pauline Feeney, one of the leading one of the leading marine biologists of Maui, who wrote Molokini Crater. The book has written numerous books about the different wildlife and fish in Nooda Bronx of Maui. Pauline did not have any children. So, if this type of bill would have been implemented, her life's work of 25 years in Maui would have been for naught. And I wouldn't have the privilege of standing in front of you here today as an owner-operator. I do have a son. And although my dream would be to pass it down to him, that might not be his dream. With this type of bill, there would be no other choice. And I wouldn't have the opportunity to be retired as I was able to help Pauline retire in her life, contribute back to the economy, buy a home as she did with the money that I purchased the business with. Point number two about increasing rates. I definitely agree that Dobar and DLNR needs funding to be able to manage us. But the amount that you guys are trying to increase, I find to be extremely troubling. As any business would do, we'd be passing that buck on to the customer. Correct? I'd just jack my rates up and pass it down to the customers, which in turn would lower tourism here in Maui. I'm not sure if you're very familiar with scuba diving or snorkeling throughout the world, but it is much cheaper to go to Mexico. It is much cheaper to go Belize or Costa Rica. People come here for our amazing waters, to be with experts, to be with marine biologists, to be with these experienced people.
Can you please summarize?
Yes. So, it would be detrimental to it. Okay? When it comes to the 3,000 foot mark, all of South Maui shores are within 3,000 feet. So, all of our dive sites in Maui would be regulated within that 3,000 feet. I strongly oppose this bill. I'd love to work with DLNR and Dobar. I have never been asked to the table to be able to discuss any of these issues. Lastly, when it comes to holidays and weekends, Ms. Boni Kaur, if she came to Maui, she would normally be coming on a weekend or on a holiday. And I could not be able to take her to Molokini Crater or to sure her a good time if this bill was implemented. Thank you for your time, and I hope that you completely drop this bill. Aloha.
Thank you.
Aloha. My name is Chris Lee. I did not have time to give a testimony. So, I'd like, I know we're short on time. I'll keep it real quick. I'm also a disabled combat veteran. And I'm also the owner of Pakai Po'ke in Kailua Kona. This bill would increase our fishermen's prices. That would then increase our fish prices that would be passed on to all of you next time at your family gatherings. Please keep that in mind when you try to get rid of this bill. Mahalo.
Thank you.
Devin. Devin Milligan from Hilo, representing Hilo Ocean Adventures. Came all the way from the Big Island. So, to see this deferred to next week is a little bit of a letdown. But I just want to, I'll keep this quick. Just kind of tell you just a quick story about myself, just to kind of sum this all up real fast. I am a general manager of the company I work at. I'm a boat captain. I've worked very hard for this. My son wants to grow up and do the same thing. And I do want to be a company owner someday. But with bills like this, it looks like that's never going to happen. I grew up in Kona. I'll never be able to afford a house in Kona because the rich people have taken all of the homes. And now, if I want to get a permit, that's going to be auctioned off to the highest bidder. And the highest bidder will most likely be somebody that can afford it. So, this will be, make it, this will make it very hard for, you know, people my age and even people younger than me, like my son. So, I highly oppose this. And I hope it doesn't make it till Tuesday. But thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Aloha. My name is Dave Young. Ran the Molokai Ferry for 30 years. Governor Wahaina came to me and said, we need to take people from Molokai, take them to Maui so they have a job. Well, this new bill is going to destroy the ocean recreation industry in Maui. Maui doesn't have massive defense spending. We have nothing going in Maui but tourism. To destroy tourism, it might be popular for the moment, but the rest of the state is going to have to pay to support Maui. I just survived the fire. I drove the last boat out of Lahaina Harbors. It was burning. We're going to have a very, very tough time. Getting financing, recovering, this bill would destroy our chances. It's a very, very bad bill. Perspective-wise, I've been doing this for over 50 years. Perspective-wise, when DOT was running our small boat harbors, we had money. They were business-oriented. Don Chang, at our last meeting at the MAC in Maui, said, I'm really at cross purposes. I'm trying to protect the environment, but we're trying to manage businesses. He says, it's a really tough item of cross purpose. Can you imagine what would happen if you guys turned Honolulu Harbor over to DLNR? Can you imagine what would happen? We'd shut Honolulu Harbor right down. And what would that do to our state economy?
Sir, can you please summarize?
Please consider that. We need an adult in the room to consider it. This is an overreach for DLNR. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Aloha again. Terry Wilkins Slicher, Jack's Diving Locker Managing Partner, one of the managing partners for 42 years. We have over 40 employees. We are strongly opposed, and I speak on behalf of our community, our boating community as well, strongly opposed to Bill HB 2477. There's not a whole lot of, I mean, almost every bill has some good things. There's not a lot of good in this one. And the over-commercialization happened when they opened up ramp permits. And that was stated by Shandra Birch a little while ago. And it's, it is, it's out of control. I mean, a possible solution would be to offer to buy back some of the permits to get it down to a more manageable level. The harbor permits themselves for commercial operation at Honocahu and the different harbors on Hawaii Island and almost throughout the whole state haven't changed. So, it's mainly the ramp permits where it's changing, it seems. Having our permits go up for auction, having our permits taken away from us across the board because there's overcrowding and then starting over again by auction, or only being able to transfer to a family member, you know, that's not a viable solution for a lot of people. I used to think that our son Kavika, who worked with us since he was like six years old, would want to be a part of our business. Our partner thought his son Russell would want to be a part of his business, their third generation, you know, we're second generation. And that's not going to hap, happen. My son Kavika says, you guys work too hard. I do not want to go through what you guys go through. And so, in summary, it's just... We want our employees to be able to have the opportunity to own our business. We want to be able to continue to run our business. You've seen the passion here. We do good things in the community. We are the community. We want to sit down with Dobar and come up with viable solutions. We would like Ed to sit down with us, and we would like to work something out that will work for most people. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Aloha. My name is Cal Morse, and I'm a permit holder out of the Haleiwa Harbor. I received my permit about three years ago, and I'm still paying off my loan. I'm one of the last permits to be granted in Haleiwa Harbor. So, I'm one of the permits that is at risk to be entaken very soon. Recently, in the past, I was confident in my business and that I would be able to raise a family, provide for my wife. Now, it's all being in jeopardy. Now, I don't know. This kind of stuff is something that I'm even afraid to tell my family that's going on because I don't want them to worry at this, at this great of a magnitude for me and for my family, for my recent engagement with my wife.
Mr. Morse, we still have one person on Zoom who would like to testify.
Okay. I understand. I will be short, and I know that how I feel is how so many hundreds of people feel in Hawaii right now. But what me and my crew do on the water isn't just a job. It provides us a rare opportunity and vocationally to do what we are truly passionate about. Not only are we able, about Hawaii's marine life, we're able to connect with guests on a more intimate level, motivating them to protect Hawaiian waters and how to respect and give back to the land. The companies that would ultimately win these permits would absolutely not be able to or care to educate guests on this level. From the bottom of my heart, I'm asking for this bill to be dropped and to allow me, my crew, my family, my friends, my friends' family and fellow business owners to continue to do what we love and the place that we love for as long as we're able. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our last testifier is Keone Shizuma on Zoom.
Hey, aloha. Keone Shizuma, I am testifying as an individual, just from the community. And I did not submit written testimony. But I do want to say I'm actually in support of this bill. Coming from a person who's not within the industry, like the majority of those who have spoken on this bill, I would like to mahalo the introducers or the authors of the bill. From my perspective, and what's noted in the bill is that our resources are over-commercialized. Change is hard. It will always be hard. It will never be easy to do change. We had, there was a previous testifier who mentioned that it's a tough time financially to do this change. But it was a, you know, it may be the best time to do a change when it's financially hard. We honestly had a great opportunity to change and not focus or not depend so much on the tourism industry when COVID hit, and we didn't change then and went back to commercializing our resources. Another previous testifier mentioned that there's no aloha in this bill. I would like to challenge that and say there's a lot of aloha for our resources. People talk about, other folks have mentioned about not passing down things to the next generation. I think DLNR doing, taking care of their responsibility is watching out for our resources so we can pass that down to our future generations. So, I really appreciate and support this bill. And yeah, that's all. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, that's all the member people to testify. So, Members, any questions?
I'd like to testify.
Sorry, we are all done with our testimony for today. So, I'd like to allow Members to ask questions. Members, it is 11:12. Still have a number of bills on the agenda. So, just ask if you could keep your questions succinct.
Dobar, just one question, Dobar. How did we get here? What started this? When I first got into this, heard about this, I thought it was because we were talking about manta rays and too much boats, Molokini. How did Kauai come into this picture? I know we have more permits, but we've also expanded and improved the boat harbor. And in the future, we're going to make it better because Clayton Kubo had talked to me about needing another ramp, which is going to come. What, what, what happened?
Well, there's been a lot of talk about mismanagement. But we can only manage according to the laws that are on the books. And so, in 2014, when we recognized there was an overproliferation of commercial activity, we began the rulemaking process. But then, there was a run on permits. And when talking to our deputy AG, they advised us that we could not deny the issuance of a permit until we did rulemaking. Well, Chapter 91-3, as we all know, takes at least a year or longer to engage in. That's why we have the Adaptive Management Bill. So, that's why we're here today. We had House Bill 1090 passed last year. Unfortunately, it was vetoed by the governor. And we're trying to come up with ways to address, how do we issue new permits? This bill has nothing to do with existing permitees. None of their permits are going to be auctioned. This bill is for new permits. And new permits pertain to like the four new surf school permits in Kalu Bay on the Big Island. The big one is going to be the manta shore permits. That's huge. And how do we fairly issue out these permits? I mean, I agree. If you've been in business the longest, it's hard if you're just going to put the permit out to auction. That's why we initially recommended issue to the longest-standing business first. That's what we were looking to do. And that's why we're back again. If we don't change the statute, we cannot change the way we manage. It all comes from the statute.
Okay, thank you.
Members, any more questions?
Dobar, can you please help us understand, what is this meeting that's happening?
I was asked to have a meeting by some of the Kauai folks that are here. And I said, sure, we have a meeting. And we're going to have a meeting down at our office tomorrow for Sand Island Access Road at 8:30. People are welcome to attend. And we can go over what we're doing here, what we're proposing. Nobody in DLNR is proposing to take anybody's permit away. We do have to address the attrition. One of the problems with attrition is it never happens because all these businesses are incorporated. So, you sell the corporation, the permit transfers with the corporation. That's in the statute. If we're going to bring it down by attrition, that's why we added the language. In areas where the permits exceed the authorized limit in rule, only those permitees would be allowed to bid on the existing permits.
Do you have a list of all the places where the existing permitees exceed the limits?
Yes. It's only, like was mentioned before, there's like three main areas. Honocahu small boat harbor, primarily the launch ramps. Kikiola launch ramp area, there's supposed to be 10. There's actually 28. We just did audits. We start, began auditing these permits. And so, we're not renewing three of them. Because what people are doing with the permits, they're speculating on them. They're sitting on the permit and in hopes to sell it for a profit. So, now, we're down to 25. But we have 15 more to go. If we come down to the limits that were set in rule way back in 2014.
And what was that third one?
Third one would be, well, we have one over at Malawar on Maui. And...
Maybe if you can just provide the list to the committee?
Yeah, I can. There's only those four. There's one other, sorry, I can't remember. Kailua Bay.
Thank you. If you can provide the list to the committee, how much you're allowed, how much you're over. I think that would be very, very helpful.
Yeah, I want to say something. But I know...
Is there a question in there, Rep Hatcham?
Yes. Well, because we went through the same fight when we were in Department of Ag, when I was the Agriculture Chair, because we have the leases come up. And when the leases expire, we go through the same fight all the time. But they have policies in place. Obviously, you don't. And that's, and you, it's pretty obvious that you crafted this bill in a bubble without consulting with anybody. And that's very problematic. And why did you do that? And why did you do that? That's my question.
This was statewide outreach meetings that were held. We knew what was, what the challenges are. Like I said, the bill passed last year. Unfortunately, it got vetoed. But we need a mechanism in statute how to address when we have areas that exceed the permitted limits, and how do we address the issuance of new permits? We just got sued. We tried to do it by lottery. We thought that's the fairest way. Qualify, do by lottery because we don't have a waitlist. And they're challenging that now in court. So whichever direction we go in, we're facing these lawsuits, so I don't...
Ed, Kikiola Boat Harbor is going to expand another additional ramp. Are you still going to cut the permits? Aren't you still able, won't you be able to accommodate those permits with additional ramp?
Well, we can, it's going to get another launch ramp lane, but it's not getting any fast land expansion. It's already crowded for parking.
Right, but I know that the private industry is trying to work on that issue. So that's where you guys need to talk.
We've reached out to Kikiola Land Company, too, yes.
Okay, members, any more questions? Okay, seeing none. We're going to move to HB 2626 relating to fish ponds. Just get to my page. DLNR.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Chair Chang wanted to stay as long as she could, but she had a conflicting matter. So unfortunately, you get the new guy, Ryan Kanakoule, First Deputy, DLNR. Regarding this bill, we stand on our testimony and support and are here for any questions.
Okay. Olan Leemomi Fisher, in person.
Aloha, my, Olan Leemomi Fisher with Kua. Thank you, committee members, for hearing this bill. I'm testifying on behalf of Kuaaina Ulua Wamo, or Kua, which works to support a large network of Maalamaaina organizations, hundreds of practitioners and organizations statewide. And our largest network is our Hui Maalama Loko Ia.
Ms. Fisher, if you could please help us out and stand on your testimony. Just stand on your testimony would be much appreciated.
I have, I have, I have one thing to just add. So yes, we stand on our testimony, but in light of DLNR's comments, we had some suggested amendments, which would basically just remove the EIS language and just focus this measure only on lease streamlining. So I have a printout for you folks if you wanted it.
You can give it to...
And we also have Janine Johnson with the Maunoluwa Fish Pond Heritage Center. She was just able to make it. If she's able to testify...
We are really running short on time. If we want to move this bill forward, we need to keep going.
Okay, got it. Well, we just, we strongly support it. Thank you for hearing it. Thank you.
Thank you. David Shizuma on Zoom.
Stand by my testimony.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, is there anyone else wishing to testify?
Aloha, my name is Janine Johnson. I am the Secretary to the Maunoluwa Fish Pond Heritage Center. We submitted testimony, and I stand on that unless you have any questions.
Thank you so much. Okay, that's all. We have signed up. Anybody else wishing to testify? I already said that, but... Okay, members, questions? I'll follow up with questions. But yeah, I look forward to continuing to work on the bill. Yep. Okay. Members, any other questions? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to HB 2467 relating to rent credits for demolition and infrastructure costs on public land leases. Okay, Department of Land and Natural Resources.
Ryan Kanakoule, First Deputy. First, I have to apologize on my testimony on 2626. We offered comments and concerns, but I didn't know that we skipped ahead, given the time. But regarding 2467, we stand on our testimony and support and are here for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for clarifying. James McCully. Okay, anyone else wishing to testify? Okay, seeing none. Members, questions? Okay, seeing no questions. We'll move on to HB 2468 relating to direct negotiation for public land leases. Department of Land and Natural Resources. Okay, thank you. James McCully on Zoom.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Apologies for missing the previous agenda item. I'll stand on my testimony, available for questions if the Chair wishes. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all signed up. Anyone else wishing to testify? Okay, we have someone on Zoom.
Was that Mr. McCully?
Oh, okay.
Ms. Nishiki?
Hi, testifying on 2468. I have...
We're on 2469.
No, not 2468.
Oh, no, we're on 2468, sorry. Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, my concern about 2468 is the commercial industrial hotel and resorts portion of this. I can give a specific instance here in Maui where it can be very detrimental if there is not a public RFP put out. There is a parcel of land that is in Kihei, Kapu. And it is a state land parcel for the state beach reserve, and a resort is trying to secure that parcel for themselves to serve their hotel. And the community wants it to serve the beach reserve for public parking. And so we are concerned that this bill will allow the land division to negotiate directly with the resort and leave the public out. And so I would ask that commercial industrial hotel and resorts be taken out of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else wishing to testify? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to HB 2469 relating to updating public land leases issued pursuant to Chapter 171 Hawaii Revised Statutes of Department of Land and Natural Resources. Okay, James McCully on Zoom.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, please defer this bill. I'll stand on my testimony, available for questions.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to testify? Okay, seeing none. Members, questions? Okay, no questions. We'll move on to HB 2579 relating to the Hilo Community Economic District, Department of Land and Natural Resources. Thank you. James McCully on Zoom.
Yes, again, thank you, Chair. I stand on my testimony in strong support, available for questions.
Thank you, members. That's all we have signed up to testify. Is there anyone else wishing to testify? Okay, seeing none. Members, questions? Okay. We will move on to HB 2471 relating to inspections on public lands. DLNR. Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to testify? Okay, members, questions? Okay, no questions. We'll move on to HB 1955 relating to the Special Land and Development Fund. DLNR. Thank you. Okay, anyone else wishing to testify? Seeing none. Members, questions? Okay, no questions. Okay, we'll recess for decision-making. Thank you.